All right, welcome everybody. We will convene the Belvidere City Council regular meeting of February 20th, 2023 to order. The clerk will help me with the roll, please.
Burton. Burton is absent. Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Eight present.
Right, if you'll please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our many blessings that we enjoy tonight. As we begin this, as we begin this meeting, we pray for you to continue to bless our country, our community, and our freedoms. We pray to thank you for all the current military service members and for the countless men and women veterans who have served throughout our country's history. We thank you for their service and sacrifice. We also thank you for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout our country, heroes who answer each call to help citizens in need, and we pray for their safety and well-being. We ask that you give each of us compassion, courage, patience, and wisdom tonight as we conduct our city's business. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen. All right, we do not have any public comment registered this evening. Approval of minutes would entertain a motion for item four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of February 6, 2023, as presented in your packets. Can I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Mahal. Any questions, any corrections, any errors? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed. Thank you. And we do have a public hearing this evening, for a public hearing for new well number 11 and well facility generally located in the vicinity of 3081 Huntington Drive in Belvidere, Illinois. We will open the hearing at 7:03 PM, public hearing. If there's anybody who wishes to speak, feel free to at this time. I guess I will read the notice of the public hearing. It is for new well number 11 and well facility. It's located at 3801 Huntington Drive, Belvidere, Illinois. It was on February 20th at 7:00 PM, a public hearing will be held by the mayor and city council of Belvidere. And I think that is all I need to read on this. Oh, I'm sorry, the publication was dated 1/27/23. Sarah Turnipseed, city clerk, and it's been published in the Boone County Journal February 2nd, 2023, for the record. Okay, hearing nobody, we will close the public hearing at 7:04 PM. And moving on, under special messages and proclamations, we have Pam Fettis here this evening from Growth Dimensions. Pam, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. We're doing a little bit differently this year as far as providing information, report. We want to make sure it's as clear as possible to you about some of the activity that we're engaged in. So in front of you this evening, we shared a report that just kind of highlights like a little dashboard of activity. This is year to date, so we wanted to show the number of contacts, which means just basically any type of engagement, construction and expansion projects that we're involved in, and those that have been enterprise zone activity. As part of those projects, below you'll see that 29 are new businesses, 25 are existing businesses, and I have them listed in stages. And so I'll explain those stages to you. Stage one is identified as we had initial contact, and we responded with like a response, an RFI, or some information to the, to the, either it would be broker, site selector, it could be agency, or somebody. Stage two would be meetings that we've held, or maybe they're in the process of due diligence. They may be going through some processes, engineering work, you know, just asking questions, trying to get more information. And stage three would be commitment or construction. So we're trying to track those stages so you know not only how many people we've contacted and what projects we're engaged in, but really those that are active and what process, or what point in the process that they are undertaking. So we hope that this information is very helpful for you and can be a little bit more clear about some of the activity and where we're spending some of the time and resources. But I just wanted to highlight for you a few things that we're also engaged in. You know, regional broadband has been a really big issue in our region, and we don't really have a detailed plan. So we have been talking to Region One Planning Council, the state called Connect Illinois, on where some resources are to help us develop that plan. We're also willing to maybe put some of our own resources into that. But there has been also some federal resources that are available to the state, so we're trying to get an understanding of what the state's going to do and what the local area is going to be doing. We don't want to create a plan that's going to conflict with the states. We want something that would complement the state, and also we'll prepare ourselves in a better position to receive resources to focus on infrastructure and what we need to improve those, that infrastructure. Because those are very much like utilities. It's really important to businesses in order to attract them and retain them in our community. We've also been, had worked with Region One Planning Council on becoming a economic development area, district. This was just identified. The mayor was present, and we were, have been one of those partners in our, in our community. This has been a process that has been going on for like 10 years, so we just got that designation. This would allow us some eligibility for additional resources in our area to respond to infrastructure or different types of plans that we might be involved in that executes some of the priorities that we put in place in this plan. So we hope to see that this will bring some more resources in our community. We've also been working with the Stellantis idol. As you know, this has affected our area. There's approximately 2,000, under 2,000 jobs that are affected in our area. We've been identifying businesses that are doing the hiring in our community. We want to retain our workforce. We've also participated in a resource fair and trying to identify resources that are available to people that have been affected that might help offset their costs and support them. So we're going to continue to engage with the workforce connection, with the Veterans Drop-In Center, with other providers in our community in order to do so. And we're also working with the, our state partners and our local area partners in order to conduct what we call an ACE workshop. This is Accelerating Creative and Entrepreneurs, and there's one for, through the Department of Commerce, Office of Minority and Economic Empowerment. So we're going to be the first area to have a fair for businesses in those areas. So we'll get more information once they become available. The first one will be held on March 28th for Hispanic owned or managed businesses, and the other one is yet to be determined in April.
Any questions for Ms. Fettis? All right, Alderman Snow.
So I see Frontier appears to be putting in fiber. Do they have any idea when their ETA for finishing the town and having service everywhere?
Well, I believe they're working directly with the city departments of...
Brent?
Hopefully soon.
Yeah.
We've done so many Julie Locates, that's, yeah, that's half our workload these days is Julie Locates for Frontier Fiber, so. All the plans for the entire city have been submitted, and they're working through those, so I would say they're, they're well past 50% as far as where they're at with installation.
Yeah, I, you know, Brent probably the first to say is that there's so much fiber in the ground. There's more that, more organizations want to be in the ground, and there's just no, across the county and across the region, there's just no consolidated plan. And it's, we still have areas that have significant lack of services, expensive services, or then we have others that don't have any. So it's critical to kind of get everyone on the same page.
Yeah, I think Frontier has, I know they've been, I've seen them throughout the city in different areas, and they seem to be moving right along. They started up with, started out with maybe a little bit of a hiccup, but as Alderman Stevens is aware. But they ended up relocating the, their services in the public right of way, so everything went well after about the first week and a half. Right, Brent?
Yes, sir.
All right, any, any other questions? Alderman Flurry?
Just a comment. Thanks for creating this snapshot for us. It's very well organized and easy to track things, so thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. And willing to make improvements based on what your interests are to see in front of the council, so thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Pam. Pam touched on a couple things here. One of them, obviously, was Stellantis. I did have a meeting here with Congressman Foster, came to, came to my office last Friday, had a nice conversation, frank conversation with him regarding what's at stake, and obviously he's well aware of it. But the bottom line is, the fact is that the local communities, they've done as much as I think they can possibly do. The deep pocket belongs to the feds, and Congressman Foster fully understands that. So I think there is going to be, I was hoping, seems like the bar changes a little bit at a time, but I was hoping that we would have some information regarding Stellantis and regarding the status of that. As of yet, we have not. Hopefully, I'm hopeful this week, perhaps, but if not, sometime in March is what I understand. That's all the information that I have. So also Pam had mentioned with R1, they had, Michael Dunn had been effective with getting federal designation status for Region One, which opens up funding for us and opens up, you know, not only the city of Belvidere, but the county and other communities. So certainly allows us to perhaps have a fast track to federal funding. And I know people always ask, what's R1 do? And they do a lot, and I'm hoping they can do a lot more. So that's part of that. So I think Pam covered all that stuff as well, and we'll move on. We've got Mindy Long here with us tonight from the Idaho Public Library. Welcome, Mindy.
Thank you, Mayor Morris. Nothing earth-shattering at the library going on. I do have some really interesting brochure to give you. Our Dial-a-Story is up and running, our community project. We have a lot of wonderful people reading stories, if you want to pass it out. We have Officer Blanketship's reading a wonderful story. If you press five, you can hear Officer Blanketship reading a story. We have Firefighter Nick reading a story, Firefighter Matt reading a story. Principals are reading stories, so it's really great. You can dial in, the kids can hear stories from a lot of community leaders. We have more in the works, so we'll be changing it out every quarter. If you'd like to read a story, just contact Daisy. She's in charge of the community sort of recording studio, so we'll more than happy to have you come in, read a story, feature you on the menu, and they'll dial in and listen to it. So we're getting a lot of good response from them. So that's Dial-a-Story. We've been busy working on our program guide for spring. These are kind of our drafts of what's happening, and the major thing is we're having our 140th anniversary on March 9th. We have received a special certificate from the Illinois General Assembly and the Illinois State Library acknowledging us as an Illinois Centennial Library, in business for over 100 years and serving the public for over 100 years. March 9th is the date. You'll probably all be receiving invitations. It'll be open house at the library. It's a Thursday night. We do have some proclamations. The General Assembly is in session that day, so we have received a proclamation from Dave Vella. His chief of staff will be presenting it. Senator Stedelman, his chief of staff will be present with a proclamation. These proclamations will go in the new time capsule we're putting, we're burying in our little time capsule cubby, and we're waiting to hear. They're still working out the details for Congressman Foster and for Governor Pritzker. So we hope to get proclamations for those two also to put in our time capsule. So it should be interesting. It'll be a nice celebration of the library. We're going to have open house with refreshments from 5:00 to 6:00, and then 6:00 to 7:00 is the little ceremony and the time capsule. So we're very proud of getting that certificate and having these leaders, Illinois leaders present. Our telescopes are arriving on Wednesday. We're getting our three telescopes. We'll be here Wednesday. We don't have them quite ready to check out yet, but we will have them ready soon. We have to get through our Prairie Cat system and get them catalogued and ready to go. So once they're ready, you will see it on Facebook, you can check out a telescope for one week and bring it back. So be very, very interesting. And that's thanks to the Rockford Astronomy, amateur astronomers, and they will also be having, probably in April, it's not in our program guide yet, they're working a date, they will have a star night in our parking lot where they'll come with the telescopes. They'll bring bigger telescopes, and you can come at night and look at the stars. Hopefully, we can get the city parking lots turned off that night, Brent. I think we can. So anyway, it'll be really interesting. Let's see, what else is happening? We're finishing up our spring programs. Tomorrow night is the Grow Your Own Backyard Fruit Tree by the University of Illinois Extension Office at 6:00 tomorrow night. If you haven't signed up, you can sign up, or you can just stop in. We can't have chickens, but we can probably have backyard fruit trees. So that should be helpful to anyone who's trying to stretch their food budget eventually. The 22nd is going to be our Minecraft party. We have, we already have a pretty big signup for that, but we still have more room, and that's at 4:00 for school-age kids. Everyone loves, all these kids love Minecraft, so that'll be happening on the 22nd. And then we'll pretty much be done with spring programming, moving into the, I'm sorry, winter programming, moving into spring programming. Let's see, what else? We do have our summer reading kickoff party is going to be on June 10th. It's a Saturday. Our theme for the summer is going to be Have Book, Will Travel, and so our summer reading kickoff party will be along the theme of a world's fair. So we're looking for anyone who would like to have a table or a booth, showcase your information, your brochures, whatever you want to have there, and that'll be in the parking lot, and it's from 11:00 to 1:00 on Saturday, June 10th. You can just contact me at the library and to set up a table. I think that's it. There's really nothing else exciting. We're just the usual reading, so.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Long? All right.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman Frank.
Late to the game here. Thank you, Mayor. So when they read the books, do they choose the books, or do you choose the books?
For the summer reading party? They choose what they want to read, and it's like a little bingo chart. They, they just not, mark off the squares, and there'll be little challenges in there, like go visit a local, the local museum or something will be in there. So.
Okay.
It's just various things. It's not a log anymore. We don't do the logs because that's too tedious, and who wants to fill out a log all summer of 100 books? That's just, we have other things to do in the summer than fill out log books.
The second question, you just talked about something, June 10th in the parking lot?
Yep.
What, what is going on in the parking lot?
That's our summer reading party. We always kick off our summer reading every summer, the first or second week of June, and we have a big party there. We have tables, we have, we'll probably have some games or things like that in the parking lot, and then we, we hand out all the new, the summer reading checkoff sheets. So far, we've penciled in Big John's Dog and More to be the food truck, so. It's kind of a big event. Last year, I think we only had a couple hundred. I believe it rained, so it was kind of, not a very good turnout, but then pre-COVID, we always had 300 to 500 people. So.
Okay.
It's a pretty big event.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mindy.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we'll move along here. Item seven, approvals, approval of expenditures. We have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,530,718.76. Could I get a motion for that approval? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any questions regarding those in the packets that are in front of you this evening? Alderwoman Frank.
I have a constituent that always wants me to bring up what are the main things in the budget, so I just want to say that this month, there's nothing out of the ordinary. It's basically payroll, benefits, insurance, no big ticket items that stand out other than those. Thanks.
Okay. All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor then for general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,530,718.76. All those in favor, will when they're called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And then we also have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $712,780.40. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions regarding that motion from the expenditures at your desk this evening? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through H have been placed on file at the, at the city clerk's office. Moving to the next page, we have eight aye, minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works dated February 13th, 2023. Could I have a motion for their approval, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter, thank you. Any questions, corrections on those minutes? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have for second reading, item nine, unfinished business ordinance 613H is for second reading. That ordinance amending section 10-80 renewal of liquor license of the city of Belvidere municipal code. You have seen that. Basically, on the second page, you can see what was stricken and any of the date changes that were made on it. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions, any concerns, any comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item 10, under new business, we have for first reading, item A, ordinance number 614H, and ordinance amending section 82-1 of the Belvidere Municipal Code relating to planning fees. That will be back to you for second reading. We have item B, ordinance 615H, again for first reading, and ordinance repealing and reserving section 98-21 of the Belvidere Municipal Code relating to barbed wire fences. That again, you will see for second reading. We have item C, ordinance 616H in front of you as well for first reading. That ordinance amends section 114-354B2 and appendix A of the Belvidere Municipal Code to modify sewer rates. That as well. We'll be back. And item D, resolution 2023-3, a resolution authorizing the participation in Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative, NYMAC, and authorizing the mayor to approve a, bless you, authorizing the mayor to approve a contract with the lowest-cost electricity provider for a period of up to 36 months. Have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Any question regarding this motion? I think it's self-explanatory, speaks for itself. We'll find the best deal we can get, and we'll go from there. Okay. If there are no other question, questions, all those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have motions forwarded from committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works of February 13th, 2023. Motions of public safety, Chairman Stevens?
Motion to approve a proposal dated February 7th, 2023 from EMS/MC, also known as Andrea's Medical Billing for Ambulance Billing Services.
Okay. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion out of committee? City Attorney?
Just briefly, this will come back in resolution form in the future.
All right, we need a, a vote or no on this, or no? I do. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed. And motions, planning, zoning, Chairman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to consent and approve the appointment of Ms. Barbara Volk to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a term, a three-year term ending in April 30th, 2025.
Okay. Any comment, any questions on Mrs. Volk? So happy to have her volunteer her time and very, very nice lady. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As the clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Eaton, favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And motions out of public works. Alderman Snow, can you help me out?
Sure. C, motion to approve the Design Engineering Service Agreement with M, excuse me, IMEG in the amount not to exceed $35,675.50 for the Newburg Road STBG project. This work to be paid from, from MFT funds.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns, any comments regarding that motion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Eaton, favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Alderman Snow?
D, motion to approve the construction service change orders requested from ARC Design Resources in the amount not to exceed $70,000 for the Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project. This work to be paid from, from capital funds.
Okay. Excuse me, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns? Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have a little bit of concern on these from the engineering companies. You know, we approve a certain amount, not to exceed a certain amount, you know, at a certain point. And we seem to be getting a lot of these now, high dollar items that the companies are coming back and asking for more money. And I don't know, I just think we need to get this under control a little bit, and you know, they, they need to take a little bit of responsibility for doing their initial estimates. And I'm not sure what happened on this one, but that's, that's quite a bit of money to be asking for. And, you know, I just don't want them getting too comfortable with the deep pockets of the city, you know, and, you know, asking for these changes of this kind of amount. So, I just think we need to take a close look at this.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, in this case, they give us a very favorable, favorable price to begin with. And if everything went according to plan and schedule and everything worked out, it would have been covered. But as it is with that change that you're contemplating tonight, it's still only 6.6% of the, of the contracted construction costs, which is extremely reasonable still. So, would I rather had the, the first number, the 106, certainly. The 176 total available to them, not to exceed amount, again, is still, is still a reasonable price for the work that's been completed on this project. And it falls within those percentages. Each project is going to be of its own. And in this case, I think it's warranted.
Brent, could you comment on what might be some of the intangibles that come up? I know we had run onto that, we had run into that even when we had had, and I don't dispute what Alderman Porter pointed out, but when we had demoed, for instance, the Leith Building, I know that we'd had a change order with that as well. And we do run into that every now and then. We did have some change orders as well on the river crossing, or actually the one that ended up across to, over in the island, not anywhere near where we'd hoped. We did address that one. And, but I think in fairness, I think some of the intangibles that they look at whenever they bid a project, but some of the unknowns.
Correct. And that, and that's going to happen on, on projects, especially depending on how big and how large scope a project is, such as Logan Avenue. And probably time was, was one consideration that we ran into, where originally they thought it could be done in about a three-month period, and it's taken about almost a 12-month period by the time they finally finished the punchless items and so forth. So, just the extended amount of time it took to complete the project has something to do with it. Some of the details you run into when you do the excavations out in Caswell Street at the intersection, there was a lot of excavation work that had to be done, some additional excavation work had to be done for what we found underground once we got there that we could not anticipate prior to the construction activities. So, that took some extra effort to resolve those issues, and that's going to be included coming up in a change order that we're going to look at at that next committee meeting. So, it's, it's, and even the ADA requirements that we have to deal with now and the specifics and, and the details in those ADA requirements, especially on Logan Avenue with the, with the grade differences and the slopes and so forth, there was a lot of, there's a lot of more detail work that's involved in the, in determining those grades and how much work has to be done, not done. Certainly, most of that could be, could be developed ahead of time and addressed in the, in the plans. But again, when you go in and you find things under the ground that you weren't anticipating to find, then you have to make adjustments in order to do that. That takes additional time and effort to do that. So, you're going to find, no matter what project we do, a, a large percentage of those projects are going to involve change orders, just because of what you find once you get into the work.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments on that, on the motion on the floor? All right. Thank you, Alderman Porter. Appreciate it. That's, that's fair. Appreciate it. Hearing nothing else, all those in favor of the motion to approve the Design Engineering Services Agreement with IMEG for the Newburg Road STBG project, will when their name is called, answer aye. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the Construction Services Change Order request for our design resources in amount not to exceed 70,000 for Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project. All those in favor, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Eaton, favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Alderman Snow?
E, motion to approve the Change Order Number 2 from Williams Brothers Construction in the amount of $17,726.09 for the 2018 wastewater treatment plant improvement project. This work will be paid from, from the Sewer Depreciation Fund as part of the IEPA loan for this project.
All right, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eaton, favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Alderman Snow?
F, motion to approve the low bid from Bowler Construction Company in the amount